So it was almost a $10,000 display.
Wow.
Good morning. Welcome to the Sunday, January 3rd, 2021 School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Rob Mullin.
Good morning, Mike Moran.
Good morning, Mark Branca, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Bastucci.
Anthony Tenerella.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
We also have Jeff Bo joining us via Zoom. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Visitors, comments, any questions? We have no visitors this morning. New business, COVID-19 update, Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll just jump right into the PowerPoint. So I think the goal of this meeting is to kind of assess where we are at this time and certainly to start thinking about where we're going over the next couple of weeks. So as always, we'll start with our traditional slides. Our learning model drivers. I won't necessarily read them to everyone at this point, but you can see we are going to prioritize the health and safety of all students and staff at all times. We will continue to look at context and data as we think about our reopening plan, as we think about moving students in, moving students out, and how we can best address the needs of everyone in the district. And as always, just a reminder that per Massachusetts DPH and DESI recommendations, as a school in a regular community, we should be implementing a hybrid model while maximizing personal learning time for high need students. That being said, I want to do something a little bit different. Instead of putting up the static graphs that we usually use, I think it's important to direct everyone towards the website. The website, we've updated a little bit, so I want to draw attention there so people can see what our homepage looks like and what the information looks like. So as we think about this moving forward, as you know, I put a communication out just before break saying that we would suspend email notifications to families throughout the winter break, not really understanding or recognizing the fact that our nurses needed some time off and that when information came in, we would put it right to the website. I think the COVID dashboard has been timely. It's been helpful. It's been accurate. And I think it provides actually a little bit better context for parents when they start thinking about making those decisions. When we send an email out, I think one of the things that we found particularly after Thanksgiving was we were getting notifications of positive cases and those kids were clearing potentially a next day or two. So it wasn't like a kid was testing positive or stamina was testing positive and they'd be on an active case for 10 days. And I think that was part of the timeliness of the communication. So we had the dashboard. We updated it, so I'm going to take everyone there. This is our district homepage. If you go to the banner at the top in black right here, you'll see, please click here for our dashboard. So we found and we heard feedback from some families that the old data was a little bit cumbersome in navigating. It was a little bit too much information, it was information overload. So we didn't want that necessarily go away. So we put that down at the bottom as a tab that you can still access. But this right here is a snapshot of what really is important to families as they think about making decisions for their kids. It's the number of active cases in the district, the percentage of the in-school person population, as well as cumulative number of cases. So the other thing that's important on here is I think it's important that parents know that we have an active timestamp on here. So you can see that this information was updated yesterday at 5:38 PM. So currently in the district, we have three active cases. There are two active cases at TES and there's one active case at THS. Cumulatively, since September 14th, we've had 66 active cases in the district. But right now, 66 total cases. Currently, we have three active cases. So the details.
Can I ask a question just on that slide?
Sure.
Have any of those three been in school since we closed?
Since the 23rd?
Since, yeah, since the 23rd, second?
No, no one's been in since the 23rd.
No, I meant have, were they, were they positive before we closed? When did they fall off, I guess is my question.
January 8th. Two of them are January 8th confirmed when they're done. And the other one, I don't know yet. We're still working with the family.
So counting back, they weren't positive when we left?
No, so my, so my assumption is, and I'll go to the next page.
Okay.
So if we go to the next page, you can see right here, the three active cases in yellow. We received notification on December 30th for two of them and December 31st for one of them. Okay? So that notification tells me that they probably tested around the 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th probably and then got their results. But they don't clear until January 8th.
Correct.
Two of them. I don't know about the other.
But I guess my, my point was they didn't test positive while being in school?
No. Well, I doubt it, given, given the fact when we received the notification. But I don't know that for sure. So this page is still here for backup information. So you can see, you can certainly see, you know, a concerning trend. So September, we had three total cases. October, we had four total cases. November 13th, and then December, we had 46 total cases. You know, I think one of the things this committee discussed specifically was the time period after Thanksgiving. So if we look, you know, the second and third week in December, you can see where the cases really started to, to increase significantly. But this information is all on our webpage. It's coming for parents. And it's good that parents understand and know what the time is. They can look for trends and patterns on their own. But, but the real thing is the active cases and when they clear.
So you stopped sending out the letters?
So my intent is to stop sending an email because, because it's just one piece of information. And I think the assumption is when you get that email, that means for the next 10 days, you're assuming this provides better context. And one of the things we talked about with this is I had a conversation with Ryan, and I believe Becky was on the text, I'm not sure. But I know there's a desire to update this more than once or twice a week. I actually have access to update this myself personally. So anytime I receive notification, I will keep this as live as I possibly can. I will keep this as coming as possible. So my guess is you will see this updated every single day and sometimes multiple times a day when I get notifications. Because it's just as easy for me to load the information here as it is my spreadsheet on the side. So I will keep this coming. So I think it's good information. And again, I think, you know, in terms of, in terms of the context, it gives you a better snapshot of what's going on in the school. So that's where we are in terms of information for the schools. Also on this page is the town information that we see every week from the bi-weekly, the weekly Mass DPH report. It's great to see the numbers trending down in terms of the far right column, our positivity rate. 14.49 was one of the highest in the state. I would say it was probably top five in the state, I think, if I, if I went back and looked at it. So that was a rough period. We've gone down a good amount since then. I would say that we are not, no longer in the top 10 in the state in terms of community spread positivity. But it's just another piece of information that's good information for parents to understand where we are. So that information is also on our dashboard. So I think the dashboard is a good spot for parents to go. And again, you can get the high level, quick and easy, what's our active case count. I want a little bit more about what's going on in the schools. Well, you can go right there. And then at the bottom tab, if you want to know what it looks like in the community, click on that tab and you get the community information. So that's, that's the information that's public, that's broken down, and that's on our webpage. Any questions about this before I go back to the PowerPoint?
I think it's great.
So. My nails are necessary. Here we go. So for those who are watching, that is our website. Go there and the banner at the top, COVID-19 Dashboard, we'll be right there. As this group gets together, it's important that you, you know, think about other contextual factors as well. I have spoken at great length with our nurses and they are concerned about a potential surge in cases coming. They're, they're, they've done a fantastic, fantastic job of being proactive. They're doing all the contact tracing for in-school cases and they are concerned and worried about a surge that could be coming. In your drive, I've given you a letter or I put a letter that is from the presidents, the co-presidents of the TTA requesting two weeks of remote learning. 75% of the TTA supported that letter or supported the survey. So that's in your drive for you to review. As you start thinking about what our best plan of action is, certainly we need to think about a financial component. And I don't think it's a deal breaker either way. But if we do, if we were to go to remote, we need to think about DBOS and continuity services and what that will look like. We need to think about Witsen's and what the inventory there will look like. If we have additional questions about a deal with Witsen's, I'm going to pump to Mr. Messina. Another piece of information that's important for you to know is that since Thanksgiving, 52 students have moved from hybrid to remote. What we can't pull out of that number, it's difficult, difficult to pull out of that number, is the number of kids who went from hybrid to remote because they were potentially deemed as a close contact. We know some of them were deemed as close contacts because of school. But if I went to visit my family in Chums or Thanksgiving and somebody there tested positive, I was a close contact there, we don't necessarily get that information from parents. So parents tell us their kids are going remote, but we don't necessarily keep going deeper and deeper. We don't have the manpower to find out exactly why all these kids are going remote. But cumulatively, we know that 52 students have gone in that direction. Certainly, as we think about moving to remote learning, winter athletics, you can make an argument either way, but just something that needs to be considered. The social emotional health of students, we've talked about that. And prioritize high need students, we've talked about that as well. Again, we can make an argument either way, but those are just school considerations that need to be factored. In terms of community considerations, you know, if we were going to remote, would parents create their own learning pods? And if so, would mitigation strategy be employed? I don't know. Maybe a lot of, maybe most of our parents have the ability to work from home or take time off or have somebody come watch your kids. I think a good chunk of our parents don't necessarily need childcare in the school lot. But it's just something to consider. Thanksgiving break, I'm hearing mixed reviews on this. Personally, my son went back to school after Thanksgiving and then came home. But I also understand a lot of kids didn't go back to school. And I think that was one of the big concerns around Thanksgiving, was these kids were coming from college campuses. Not really sure how much they were socially distancing on campuses and certainly catching different communities and coming back to Tinsborough. So I don't know exactly how many of our kids went back and came back or who stayed home the entire time. I think that's kind of a missed bag, but it's a consideration. We saw that in the last two weeks, our community numbers have dropped. Hard to say if this is a result of testing fatigue, pandemic fatigue, or is, are we doing a better job of social distancing? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how you would get the answer to that. And the last thing I included in the drive, just so you could see, one of my colleagues put out an informal survey to superintendent group just to ask what people were doing in terms of returning. If you were hybrid or in-person, what was your plan after break? So this doesn't have to go to remote communities. This is hybrid in-person. And for those that were hybrid and in-person, 87 people responded. 53 said they were going to return on January 4th or 5th, 25 on January 11th, and nine on January 19th. Again, just contextual information you have. And you can see those communities, you can see those communities in your drive as well. So that's just information for you to have as we think about this moving forward. I think one of the things that's certainly in our benefit right now is the fact that if a surge were to come, I think we would see it this week coming up, not this week past. That being said, there's another meeting on Monday night. Join me with the Board of Health. There's a meeting on Tuesday. It's a regular school committee meeting. So we, I think keeping meetings consistently is good for us to keep our handle on where the numbers are, where the trends are, and what our thought process is. So that's our upcoming school committee meeting schedule. And with that. Let's turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. A lot of great information. Before it gets lost in the COVID discussion, looking at the upcoming schedule, it looks like we go a month between February 9th and March 9th. I know typically we don't meet because of February vacation. It may be worth trying to find another meeting between those dates just to keep the frequency up.
Absolutely. So we can revisit that either 12th or 26th, we need to delay Monday tonight?
Correct. Yeah, we can look at it. I just want to make sure we don't go a full month without meeting. Also a reminder, the meeting on Monday with the Board of Health is a Zoom meeting.
6:00 PM.
That's a week from Monday, not this Monday?
A week from tomorrow.
Yeah, a week from tomorrow, sorry.
I think Carrie is going to send the link?
Is that correct? I believe so.
Discussion? Questions, comments?
I find the trending after Thanksgiving quite concerning. It's not new data, so, you know, we've already talked about this in our prior meetings. I could beat it to death, but the trending after Thanksgiving is concerning. It was two days out of school. This break that we're on right now is, I don't know if it's 10 days out of school or if it's seven days and then add the weekends onto it. There are two holiday events, so two gathering events, I would say, where people would historically or traditionally gather. And whether they followed guidelines or didn't follow guidelines, none of us will know. I did reach out to the Board of Health myself to find out what their thoughts were about if we were to see a spike from Christmas and New Year's. When might we see that spike? Because, you know, I'm glad that we'll be meeting with them on January 11th, but there's the chance that that could be too late. And the response that I got is that it would traditionally, based off the trending from Thanksgiving, they would expect one to two weeks after the event to see the spike. So one to two weeks after Christmas and then one to two weeks after New Year's to see the spike in numbers. That starts our trending, the potential for our trending to start going up early this week. And so I have a significant concern about this week. I'm really happy to see the numbers over break. I'm happy to see our community numbers. I think those are all heading in the right direction. I, I feel that we're just sitting on a time bomb, waiting for these next numbers to come out. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree that I'm concerned about what the community number is going to look like. I think, you know, the key point for me through all this is we're still not seeing the transmission, transmission in the schools. Unfortunately, you know, students aren't catching it. But it's, we don't have outbreaks as a result of students coming to school. The mitigation strategies in the schools are being enforced and they're working. Can I say something?
So I meant to put the comment on that as well. I apologize for that. Of the 46 cases here, we know that six of those did come from that one cluster at the elementary school. You know, where we took a targeted intervention and were able to close that classroom. Thank you.
Do we know a percentage of the numbers are students or we don't gather that data?
So I know.
Like you don't share it?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to ask.
Does anybody have any other questions, comments?
I guess I do have a question. So when we say that something was not an in-school transmission, is that, is that by process of elimination or is it by default that we're saying this? And what I mean by the question is, have we traced back to where the individual got the COVID?
Yes.
Yes.
Nurses are, yes, when they did the contact tracing.
Okay, so during contact tracing, they know where they, where, how the COVID was transmitted to that individual?
To the, to the belief, yes. I mean, nothing is 100% guaranteed this is where it came from, but yes. And what we do know, what we do know factually is if you were deemed a close contact in school, aside from the cluster, we did have in-school transmission in the cluster. Aside from that, if you were deemed a close contact in school by the school department, there's been no case of transmission there, aside from that one cluster.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The letter from the TTA. Do we know how many teachers they actually serve?
No. Well, the letter doesn't state it. I don't know, Dr. Flanagan, if you have any extra information?
I have, I have no additional information beyond the letter itself.
So we, we don't know how many respondents there were? We don't know the exact wording of the question either?
And I'm assuming that this is just the TTA, it's not our custodians, maintenance?
Correct, this is only the TTA.
Administrative staff, blah, blah, blah.
Correct.
But do we know how many members of the TTA?
So. According to the letter, the takeaway is, it says, "It is our responsibility and our duty to share the fact that 75% of our TTA members feel that the safest option for students, teachers, and Tinsborough community as a whole would be to go remote for two weeks following winter break."
Do we know how many members?
Correct. We don't have any more.
Respondent, we don't know. I don't even know if we draw.
About 190 teachers in Paris are members of the TTA, but again, we don't know what answer to that survey.
Correct. Can Jeff hear us? Jeff, do you have any comments?
I was here, if I could, it was appropriate time to chime in here. I don't want to cut anybody off. I definitely, you know, looking at, at the numbers, it's great to see the community has come down. You know, certainly we don't want people being affected. We all want to see those numbers. And looking at how things progressed past Thanksgiving and looking at and seeing that the numbers came up after Thanksgiving, being just a one-day holiday, I would definitely like to see, you know, what the next week is going, is going to bring. And knowing that, you know, from, from looking at it from a medical perspective and talking to medical professionals and even just hearing, reading through the email from the, or the letter from the TTA, it feels like there is a, an opportunity here to be proactive and satisfy some of the, some of the concern and the need for additional data of what's going to happen after having a week of holiday and, you know, two holidays really in that stretch. And really just, I know the TTA was looking at, I think they said two weeks in the latter. I'd actually like to make a motion, if I could, to go remote the week of the 4th. And I'd take a look at what the data is going to bring us and reconvene next week to confirm that whether or not we go additional, an additional week remote or if we can go back to the hybrid model.
So to clarify, Jeff, you, you're making a motion to go remote for one week?
Beginning January 4th.
You're making a motion to go remote for one week starting January 4th?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Discussion?
If I may?
Absolutely.
Right now, we have three active cases in Tinsborough Public Schools. And naturally, what I'm looking at is Tinsborough Public Schools. Not one of those three cases has been in school since we've closed, which means we technically would come back to school tomorrow without a single case within the buildings, any of the three. I'm afraid that we will set a precedence going forward that these are the numbers and we haven't reacted based on fear through the entire Thanksgiving break. And I think in looking at that today, knowing that we only have three cases, they have not been in school. I'm personally not in favor of this motion. I think we should wait, see what the numbers are, and then react at a future meeting. And we can have meetings anytime we want. We can do a special meeting anytime we want. So that's my thoughts.
Can we just make sure we all speak up loud enough that Mr. Bo can hear us on the other end?
Yes. Thank you.
Julie?
So my concern is for the teachers and maybe the elderly people or the people, the teachers that are more older or the teachers who maybe have underlying conditions or any children who have underlying condition. Those are the ones who I'm concerned for right now. However, my feeling is that these people need to talk to their medical professionals and decide what's the best way to go forward for them. And talk to the school too and say, this is what I feel. This is the best way I should go forward. I feel that's a small percentage. And because of that, I feel that we should continue the course we're doing. I feel like the course that we're doing right now is a good course. We have a lot of mitigation things in place to keep everybody safe. The children's social emotional needs continue to need to be met. And I don't feel like remote is the best way to meet those needs. I feel like hybrid is continually the best way to, in our situation, of course, full and personal learning is the best way to do their needs. But right now, I think hybrid is continually the way to go forward. And I agree with Mr. Tenerella that we should continue our course of action that we have right now. I'm not in favor of this motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I am in favor of this motion based off the trending that we saw after Thanksgiving. I understand that we only have reported three cases. I'm waiting for the tidal wave to happen next week. And as Tony said, you know, we can choose to be reactive after things have happened or we can choose to be proactive, which is what real leaders do. So that's why I'm in favor of going remote for a week.
I take offense to that comment personally. Thank you.
Mr. Moran, Mr. Mullin? I'm personally against the motion. I understand the concern. Community numbers did spike significantly after Thanksgiving. But I think the safest place for our kids was in schools. We know for a fact mitigation strategies are being enforced. Social distancing is being enforced. Masks are being enforced. We have cohorts keeping them separate from each other. Hand washing's happening. We have the air purifiers. We have all these strategies to keep the kids safe. And everywhere these strategies have been employed, we're not seeing transmission as a result of the schools. So, you know, we decided two weeks ago, when we had 198 new cases, to stay the course. Now the latest number is 107, which is almost half of that. I don't see why we would change from that course now when we're trending in the right direction. Will that be a spike because of Christmas? Most likely. But until that starts showing up in schools and spreading as a result of students coming to school, I just don't see a reason to go remote.
Mr. Chair, to add a little bit of flavor to that. I think I heard Dr. Flanagan report that 52 people who were hybrid or 52 students who were hybrid went remote.
Correct.
Is that still an option available to students to go remote? Nothing has changed in that policy to state that if you feel uncomfortable in your particular social situation, your home or who you're going with or trusting as people stay with you, other people in that room are supposed to do. You still have the option to go remote?
Correct.
We don't penalize or hold anything against students for making that choice?
We do not.
Perfect, okay. I'm not in favor of the motion.
There's no more comments. We'll take a, okay?
In some ways, I have to agree with Rebecca. Thank you. I have to agree with Rebecca in some ways that any time we start seeing a spike in numbers, it's already too late. And I'm talking as a community, not as just a school district. If we, we've already seen the numbers that happened after Thanksgiving. Like everyone has already said, it was just a two days out of school. We see what happened. It spiked two weeks afterwards and then it starts going down because we've already identified all the people who caught it, who have it, and they're being quarantined. And so that helps to start reducing the numbers. After a week and a half out of school, people traveling, we've all seen the numbers from TSA and how many people have gone through Logan Airport. I'm, I am afraid of those numbers that we're going to see, all right? Community-wise and the entire state. It's, we are going to start seeing a double spike because of the It's, we are going to start seeing a double spike because of the two holidays. We had a gathering on the 25th, 24th, 25th, and then there were gatherings on the 31st to the 1st. When we do, when we are reacting, we are abdicating our responsibility. This is not meant in any offense to anyone. I know it's very difficult to make this decision when you don't see the numbers in front of you, all right? It, it's hard sometimes. We, we play a dual role because, one, we're, we're parents, we have kids in the system, most of us, I think all of us, but we're also responsible to the community as a whole And knowing what the right decision to make can be very difficult for us sometimes. I, you know, I appreciate Jeff's suggestion of going, a motion of going to one week. Right now, I think it's too late to move the entire school to remote. I think teachers have to have the time to prepare for that. They've been out a week and a half, they don't necessarily have their, their materials to be able to hit the ground running tomorrow. I think it's unfair to ask our staff for that. I think the time for that decision was a month ago. I would have rather seen two weeks, decided, decided that month ago, but this, our, our board voted a different way. It, it's unfortunate, we're gonna have to be reactive at this point, but that's, that's what we've put ourselves in a position for. The argument keeps being made that the transmission rates aren't high at the school, and I'm very thankful for that. I am, all right? The kids aren't catching it, but it's, it's the teachers, it's the staff that I'm most concerned about. I've already taken care of my kid, having that option to be able to pull him. And I know of many parents who are thankful for that option and taking advantage of it as of, you know, taking a look at those numbers of how many kids have been pulled already. But not everybody has that option, especially the parents and the staff. I, I'm sorry, the, the staff, the teachers, they don't have that option. But anyways, that's, that's all I have to say on that, okay? Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you. I just wanna make two points. One, we're the Tinsborough School Committee, so our obligation is to the school and the students. You know, as community members, we do obviously care about the community as a whole, but when we're in this room, we're charged with focusing on what's best for the students and the school district. And second is, the teachers are part of those mitigation strategies when they're in the buildings. We're not seeing teachers contract COVID from contact with students when they're in these buildings either. So I, I think that's a positive point to consider. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll take a roll call vote. So, Mr. Mullin?
Not in favor.
Mr. Moran?
Not in favor.
Mr. Bo?
In favor.
I am not in favor.
I'm in favor.
Not in favor?
Not in favor.
That does not pass with a vote of five to two. Do we have any other motions anybody would like to make? Okay, then we'll move on to signing of bills. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eleven warrants were presented to the school committee this morning. In the drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for your review, and that's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Mr. Mullin?
I'm all set, thank you. You're welcome, sir. I wanna hope that everybody had a wonderful holiday week. I hope everybody stayed safe. And I'd like to thank our staff, our teachers, our administrators for all of the hard work that they're putting in to ensure the most safety for our kids.
Just continue the mitigation strategy as best fits to your family and suits your needs. Please be considerate of others and I hope that everyone has a much better 2021 than 2020.
Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Jeff?
Just, you know, I hope everyone, monthly, everyone has a great 2021. We can put 2020 in the rearview and just say goodbye to it. I know we could all use a much better year and I'm sure it will be. And thank you to everyone in the room for accommodating me with the, with the Zoom meet. Appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments.
I'm set.
All set, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, thanks for tuning in and we'll see you next week.